Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township to order. And if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Bowlin?
Here.
Trustee Motney?
Here.
Trustee Emick? Sorry, trustee Becker?
Here.
Trustee Urban?
Here.
Trustee Ward?
Here.
Trustee Krampler?
Here.
Trustee Milliwanbye?
Here. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anybody would like to have removed? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion by trustee Bowlin, second by trustee Becker. Electronic, right?
I'm gonna actually just call it because we're not all in yet, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Bowlin? Oh, trustee Bowlin, how about that?
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin. Trustee Motney?
Yes.
Trustee Becker?
Yes.
Trustee Urban?
Yes.
Trustee Ward?
Hi.
Trustee Krampler?
Yes.
Trustee Milliwanbye?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is a regular agenda 5A. Adopt the revised purchasing policy as necessitated by HB 4251, signed by Governor JB Pritzker on May 6, 2022, effective immediately as requested by the township supervisor. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, I believe that you received an email earlier today revising the purchasing policy. Trustee Crable sent a message to me and said it would be better if we worded it a certain other way to show that it's in excess of the 30,000 that we would bid out. So it just clarified a couple of words in it. It's in your email. It's not much different than this. It's just a clarification.
Sounds good. Are there any other questions before a motion? Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Bowlin.
Second.
Second by trustee Becker. Roll call still or?
Yep, we'll just stick with this. And just to clarify, the motion is to approve as amended.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, trustee Bowlin?
Yes.
Trustee Motney?
Yes.
Trustee Becker?
Yes.
Trustee Urban?
Yes.
Trustee Ward?
I.
Trustee Krampler?
Yes.
Trustee Milliwanbye?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 5B, I said bay like in French. So we will be conducting the rest of this meeting in French. Good luck, everybody. Consider the change order and resolution for the South Side parking lot improvements. Yes, and the recommended motion is the change order will start excavating for parking lot improvements in the amount of 30,000 to be approved. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion by trustee Bowlin, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by trustee Motney. Questions? No, okay.
I just want to.
Sure.
This has to do with the underlayment. Do you think that that's why the parking lot in general probably collapsed earlier than it maybe should have?
That's exactly what they're thinking, is that the subgrade was so bad that it deteriorated that much faster.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and just to clarify, the remaining portion of the motion is also the resolution be adopted and the supervisor be authorized to execute the necessary documents, if that's okay?
Yes.
All right, keep it clean for Amanda when she does the minute, she'll be cursing me otherwise. Okay, trustee Bowlin?
Yes.
Trustee Motney?
Yes.
Trustee Becker?
Yes.
Trustee Urban?
Yes.
Trustee Ward?
I.
Trustee Krampler?
Yes.
Trustee Milliwanbye?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is 6A, comments by, reports by elected officials, and 6A would be Township Supervisor's skill.
It's unusual, but I don't have a whole lot to say. The only thing I wanted to mention, it was a fairly slow month for general assistance, emergency assistance. However, at the end of May, Ly Heap and Ly WAP will be closing, closing up their funding source until September, so we'll just see how things go at that point.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Township Supervisor's skill? No, okay. Then.
I have one more thing.
Oh, sure.
The pots program, on the other hand, is going gangbusters over full every time we collect. So keep sending your pots, trays, and plastic pots, or horticulture pots, to the five different locations located on our website. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, next item on the agenda is 6B, report by Township Assessor Steve Scott.
My report's kind of small, but letting you know what's kind of happening with the real estate market. The residential properties are selling a lot higher prices than in the past. We're seeing high increases of sales prices over the assessed values, which in turn starts to develop into adjustments to residential properties to keep up with the pace of the sales prices year over year. We use three years of averages to keep the curve level, more level, but with the high increase over the past three years since 2020 that we haven't been recognized that there may be large increases of assessed values coming up in 2022. But we're still working through a lot of the data, so just preliminary, let everybody know that there may be larger adjustments coming this year compared to other years.
Any questions? Questions?
Do you anticipate challenges then? I mean, more challenges than you usually get?
I wouldn't say I anticipated because the real estate markets, there's a lot of dialogue saying the prices being listed at one thing and people paying higher than what they're listed at. So there might not be a lot of arguments this year, but not every house is sold either, so to stomach the high increases, there's gonna be probably a little bit of debate.
So you're saying that the sale price doesn't necessarily reflect the assessed value? Or does it change?
Well, we document the assessed value and then we document a sale price to that same property. And if we see increases in sale prices in the neighborhood, let's say we get two or three houses and they all sell 10% above what we have it assessed at, then we're seeing an increase in value in that neighborhood, maybe about 10%. Not all the houses sold, but the state tests our metrics using that at the township level, and then they do it again at the county level. So if we don't make the adjustment, then the county can make the adjustment to everybody. So by neighborhood, we see the 10 sales and then we make a small adjustment in that neighborhood to keep the assessments in line with the sales prices. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you for that. When do you expect this change to happen? Is this monthly, biannual, annual?
We assess all the properties as of January 1 of the assessment year, which this year would be January 1 of 2022. We send our assessments to the county right around September, October, and then that gives a 30-day window for taxpayers to file a complaint with the board review if they don't think the value of their property is what we suggest at that time. So it's done every year. September is usually about the timeframe. We send everything to the county, then the assessment notices go out. Then your tax bill comes out in April for to pay in May and September. Or June, I mean, June and September.
Okay, thank you. And how much, do you have an anticipation of how much of an increase that this could be reflecting from the increase of the property that's being sold right now?
I don't want to say a hard number right now, because we're looking at individual neighborhoods, so we break up the city in like 115 neighborhoods. And then there's commercial property, residential condominiums, zero lot lines are all evaluated a little bit differently. But as a whole, the county's already let us know that they're seeing an increase at the county level for all of McLean County. That at the assessment jurisdiction of the city, we want to make sure that we keep, we want to do ours across the board so that the county doesn't implement a multiplier towards all of us at the same time. So if it was high, then the county gives a multiplier of what they suggest it may be. If they're seeing 10%, they would just 10% to everybody. So then, then I would expect more complaints at the board review. If we keep it all massaged at the township level by neighborhood and use code, then that might even it out where taxpayers see, well, we got a little increase this year, but last year ours was decreased a little because there was less sales. So it's kind of like, it's hard to express the word, I guess, but it's, it's a, yeah, it's kind of, well, it's a, I called it sauce, you know, spaghetti sauce.
It's a balancing act.
It tastes good, but we want to keep it even to everybody. I don't know.
Tastes good if you like spaghetti.
Yeah, I hope it's good spaghetti.
Thank you for that. With a lot of other unexpected costs that are coming to people. We know that gas bills are going up, electric bills are going up. Now, if we're talking about, you know, increases in taxes, if you get hard numbers, I would like to see us as trustees be more proactive than reactive. So any kind of information you can get to us as quickly as possible as things change, I think we would all be most appreciative of that.
Well, I'm only speaking of the assessments, not necessarily the tax bill. If the taxing bodies create the taxes, so as the assessments are kept fair and level is what we're trying to do, even though if everything went up at 10%, if no taxing body requested any additional funds with the new construction coming on, that might not cause an increase to taxes. But if everything, if this person's treated differently than this person, this guy's taxes may go up because he was treated differently. And that's, that's, that's the point of trying to do it at the lowest township level before the county does that 10% to everybody. So it's the assessment, not the taxes. They're correlated, but they're... I can't comment on a tax bill increase plan.
Right, one does affect the other.
Right.
We are aware of that. And so all I'm seeing is, I'd like to see us be a little bit more proactive and not reactive. So when the time comes and the assessment values are changing, you're gonna be our first go-to to find out what those assessment values are changing to.
Right.
Because then it's going to affect things that we need to make policy decisions on. So if you could just be very generous with your information, it would help us immensely, and I would be personally appreciative.
Okay, so right now, we're seeing large percentage increases for this year because of, before COVID-19 hit, we were kind of stable and the assessments were staying flat. In 2020, we started seeing an increase in sale prices during the pandemic. Even though, and then that continued on, see, when one year of sales falls off, and then the next year comes on. So we've seen three years of steady increases in sales prices, the assessments. So we're anticipating that first year of the average to fall off, which was a stable number, to three high numbers in a row to cause an increase in assessments at a higher rate for this year than in the past. But we're doing our numbers to do it small areas at a time, not the whole township. So we can talk Oakwoods or Hawthorne, or those kind of neighborhoods have sale prices within them. So we're trying to see if that neighborhood is actually trending up or staying stable where we don't have to increase it at all. But as a whole, the city may increase in value by a large amount. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. I'm kind of, I don't, it's hard to talk without having a picture. I could show you on a picture, but.
Well, I'm sure there'll be, we'll have opportunities to do that.
And like, the new construction is getting, we are getting some new construction in the city, so that can spread things out a little better. The increase in assessment might be initial shock, but then in the end, maybe it's like, oh, it wasn't as bad as I presumed. If that makes sense.
No, sounds good. Any other questions? No? Okay. I think we are. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
There was no public comment received.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Bowlin, second by trustee Becker. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. See you in 10 plus minutes. Okay, good evening, everybody. I am going to go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Council. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And remain standing for a moment of silence.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bowlin?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Emick?
Present.
Councilmember Becker?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember. Councilmember Crumpler?
Here.
Mayor Milawonblay?
Here. Next item on the agenda is public comment, Madam Clerk. Do we have any public comment?
We do. We received one emailed public comment, which you would have received before the meeting. That was from Joey McAdams. And then we have two people registered to speak in person. First up will be Serena Fish, and then to follow, Vicky Schultz.
Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of our views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order, and their time ceased. Serena?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Four short comments. We started early voting last Thursday. We are set up BEC and County in this building around the corner. And also at Eastland Mall in the area where was the old MC Sports. And we will be there, including Memorial Day. So if you want something fun to do, walk the mall and come vote. Again, I know this is coming more and more to the forefront here. You're all aware of it. But again, as administrator of Westside Neighbors and Miller Park Neighbors, it is pretty much the topic on the west side. Our roads, streets, and potholes. You can beautify this and beautify that. But if everybody's paying attention to going around the holes and the cracks and stuff, they're not seeing the beautiful things that this city has to offer. They're too busy trying to save their car. Again, we have another Westside meeting. Anyone that would like to come tomorrow night at 6 o'clock? It is our second candidate meeting. We sold out the first one, or it's free, but we had enough candidates. So we did another meeting, which will be tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. Miller Park Zoo Community Room. Last thing I'd like to say, and I had talked today to a couple of the moms that were here with the group that was at their last meeting. A lot of things that these people are asking for are already being done by our current chief Semitons in the police department. And I would encourage anyone that has questions about the violence and some of the things that are happening to attend the next chief's quarterly meeting, June 8th Osborne Room at 6 o'clock, and ask your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. Next?
At last, we have Vicky Schultz.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak.
Could you get a little closer to the microphone?
Yeah, sorry. Okay, is that better? Okay, thank you. So I was driving around this afternoon, and I saw that gas is up to 479 a gallon. And, you know, I know that's not, it's not, it's a national issue. The thing about that is that we, you know, a lot of issues, even with the roads and everything, we seem to be passing the buck. You know, these roads aren't city roads, they're county roads and all that stuff. And, and it, these issues never get taken care of. This is a community, and we have people here that are, especially in District 8, County Board District 8, a lot of people who are struggling financially with the high inflation, gas prices, high taxes, high property taxes. They're being overwhelmed. And they're working, you know, they're working, working, working. And I'm getting a lot of messages from a lot of different people saying, you know, they're working. They don't have time to come in, talk to people, let people know where they're at. So I'm trying to be a voice because I can feel it myself. The struggles of these people are, are big. And so, you know, some solutions need to come up. I don't know. I, you know, people need to think of ideas to address some of these needs. I don't know what can be done, but, you know, and the other thing with the roads is the taxes. We're always coming up with great ideas about, we got to raise the taxes. We got to raise the taxes with the Lotto money, or getting that money for the roads, getting gas tax, raise that, and get it for the roads. And we need more money from the toll booths, all that, that's in Chicago. But still, you know, it's just very expensive. And then the roads still don't get fixed. It just, it makes no sense. And, and it just keeps getting passed down, passed down. And the people keep spending more money in taxes. And one of the things is, you know, it begs the question, where's that money going? What's happening with all that money being raised? Do we have an accounting of, you know, the gas tax, where that money went? Or where the toll, you know, well, the toll booth's not here, but, you know, Lotto money or what? Any of that extra money? I mean, I know we came out and we said we're going to spend $7 million on roads, or $9 million, I don't know. But we don't have more money than that? There should be a lot of money for the roads. I, I'm just, you know, people want the roads fixed, they want the sidewalks fixed. And I think I'm out of time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vicky.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. And the next item on the agenda is six recognition appointments. We don't have any, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to item seven on the agenda, which is a consent agenda. And is there anything that members of the council would like to have removed? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin, second by Councilmember Ward. And we're doing electronic, right? Can we just do her?
Yeah, we can just do it by roll call, if that's okay. We just, they're all up there, but I'll just make it real quick. That's what I'm going to do. Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Eme?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda passes. There are no names to announce. We're going to move on to the regular agenda, item 8A. Consideration and action on an ordinance approving a development agreement by and between the City of Bloomington, Illinois, and Forgetful Friends LLC, as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And the recommended motion is for the proposed ordinance to be approved. And I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus to provide introductory remarks.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I actually will be brief before turning things over to Melissa Hahn, whose team has worked hard to get us to this point. We're excited, and I know that word gets used a lot, about bringing you this project. Especially because it's the second major downtown project that we brought before you in the last several weeks that are going to completely redefine vacant spaces in our downtown. Really quickly, the developer bought the property at 110 East Jefferson, which is set vacant for, I believe, 14 years. They're going to invest $1.5 million in the project and really create a downtown destination, which means that people not only go to this location, but they also shop in other downtown stores and eat at other downtown restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. So we're excited, and I'll shut up now and pass things to Melissa Hahn. Who, again, she and her team have worked really, really, really hard on this. So, Melissa?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Deputy City Manager. As the W C manager indicated, we are very excited to bring before you tonight for consideration and action a development agreement between the City of Bloomington and Forgetful Friends LLC. This agreement will result in the revitalization of a vacant building in downtown located at 110 East Jefferson. The developer is expected to invest approximately 1.5 million into the property and create three retail spaces. The primary retail space, including the basement with elevator access, will be leased to Red Raccoon Games. The incentives will consist of 50% of the municipal sales tax from Red Raccoon Games and 100% of municipal sales tax from the two other retail spaces in the event that those retailers are new to the City of Bloomington. Additionally, the developer will receive 100% of the City of Bloomington's portion of the real estate taxes generated by the property. The municipal sales tax and property tax incentive will be paid to the developer until a total of $196,900 has been received or March 31st, 2029, whichever comes first. The city will also provide to the developer 12 parking passes for the Market Street Garage and a Russ grant in the amount of $25,000. The incentive package is approximately 17% of the total project cost. And this project aligns with the city's strategic goals to retain and grow local businesses and the comprehensive plan goals to strengthen business recruitment and retention activities in the downtown. And at that, I will open it up for questions.
Do we have any questions from council or a motion? Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I have a question. My understanding is that the developer can apply for the Russ grant, but is the ordinance guaranteeing?
No, they will still have to meet the requirements of the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Montney?
Just a point of clarification. I think this is the first incentive agreement that I saw where we have an existing business that's moving and then receiving the sales tax incentive. I'm just wondering if there have been others in the past? And if you could just kind of reflect on the implications of that perhaps for the future as other businesses might simply relocate?
Sure, we have had other, other development agreements in the past for businesses that have expanded in the city. We had one for the expansion development of an automotive dealership. They received a portion of their sales tax, and that development agreement was actually paid, I believe, two or three years earlier than anticipated because that expansion led to the increased sales. I'm trying to think what else has been in the recent past. But that, it's not, you know, dissimilar to what we've done for other businesses in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Montney? Oh, sorry. You are? Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, just one clarification. For the other two portions of the property, there's only an incentive if, if the businesses that move in are from out of town. There's nothing for anybody local.
That's correct. So the developer could choose to, you know, rent the space to anyone they so choose, but would not receive the incentive unless it was new to the city.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yeah, I have one comment or question concerning the 100% rebate for the new businesses. And I don't, I don't know if that's been done before either, but I'm going to use the Green Top Grocery as an example. They started out, I think the first year was 100%, and then reduced over time. I'm not comfortable with 100% rebate on a retail store for six years as far as economic, positive economic impact. I mean, I understand people shop downtown and all that. But are these people that are going to be shopping downtown at those stores from out of town or mainly local? Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I'm sorry, were you asking if they will be from out of town?
Well, I don't feel comfortable with 100% for the, the two smaller businesses that are going to be in there. Would it be possible, or would the developer be open to having a graduated tax rebate like Green Top Grocery did?
I mean, I can't speak to that for the developer, but I will say because these would be new to the city, it's not, you know, obviously, sales tax that we're currently receiving. And it would be upon the developer to bring those in in order to reach the full amount of the 196,900. You know, that could potentially be generated from just the first retail space from Red Raccoon Games. It could be a combination of the first retail space being leased to Red Raccoon Games plus the real estate portion of that. So there, it could either be up to that 196,900 or the end of the term, whichever comes first. So it, it kind of allows the developer the opportunity to bring in new retail and maybe earn that incentive faster. So maybe it will occur in a three-year span, or a five-year span, or a four-year span, as opposed to a six-year span. Or they may determine, you know, not to lease those spaces at all. But it just allows the developer that opportunity to, to increase or shorten that term if they so choose.
I guess I'm still having trouble understanding because if 100% of the sales tax is rebated, I don't see how it can apply to anything. Because there's no, there won't be any sales tax generated per se. Or am I missing something?
Well, the 100% of the two other retail spaces will occur if those retail spaces are leased, and if they're leased to retailers who are new to the city. So it really puts it upon the developer to determine who they are going to lease those spaces to, if they are going to lease those spaces, and then how quickly they could potentially fulfill the terms of the agreement up to the 196,900 or the end of the term.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Eme, second by Councilmember Becker. And... Yes, yes. I thought she had superpowers and disappeared for a second.
It's ready for the electronic vote.
Electronic vote, okay. Okay, the item passes. There are no names to announce. Thank you, Melissa. Great job. Okay. Oh, that's why you're staying up there because this is another item. Okay. It was looking kind of awkward. You were just kind of staring at me. It was looking kind of awkward. You were just kind of staring at me for a second.
I just really like it right here.
Okay, item A B. Consideration and action on an ordinance approving a second amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the City of Bloomington and Illinois Wesleyan University to support the marketing and redevelopment of the properties in the 800 block of North Main Street and terminating the listing agreement with Caldwell Banker Commercial as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Tyus. I almost said Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quickly, the city entered into an MOU with Illinois Wesleyan back in 2018, which included a call for, we ended up hiring a broker to help market the site to attract developers. We're recommending that things be amended so that we no longer use the broker and utilize the services of the City of Bloomington to recruit development. The market has changed, and so we believe that this is something that we can and should do. I'll turn things over to Melissa.
Okay, thank you. I'm back. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Deputy City Manager. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to tonight present this item for your consideration and action. The amendment to the MOU between the City of Bloomington and Illinois Wesleyan University will allow for the marketing of the redevelopment of the properties located at 800 North Main Street. And this will also terminate the listing agreement, as Deputy City Manager indicated, with Caldwell Banker Commercial Devonshire Realty. This amendment will extend our MOU with I W U through May 31st, 2023, and will also allow the city to take on the role of marketing the project area to private developers, identify redevelopment options that benefit both the city and I W U, and seek out private development proposals for the project area. Other than that, no other changes to the MOU. With this, I will open it up for questions.
Councilmember Bullen.
Yeah, the previous MOU had all sorts of restrictions as to what could be developed there or a description of multi-use and that type of thing and apartments not for students. And there were a lot of restrictions. Are some of those going to be taken away? I mean, obviously, the city can decide if we want to accept whatever proposal, but I view developers don't want to come forward if there's all sorts of restrictions.
So in our marketing package that we had made available previously requesting proposals, and that was kind of what the Caldwell Banker was using, it did indicate kind of what we would like to see. So they were not by means restrictions, but just more of here's kind of, you know, we held public meetings, kind of, you know, talking to I W U because they own a portion of the property, taking into consideration kind of the needs of the city. This is what we would like to see. So we will take any proposals, you know, anyone that wants to come forward and submit a proposal, a letter of intent, they are able to do that.
Other questions?
Any lights? Just a quick question for you, Melissa. So what does that mean for the city in terms of marketing? What exactly are we going to do?
So we've already done a little bit of it. We've worked with a local firm and created just some general renderings that are on the website. So they're not by any means, you know, ready for development. It's really more just for concept to kind of show, you know, with our work with the public and I W U and knowing the needs currently of the community, what we would be looking at. Those are on the website. Anybody can access those. They're on the economic development page. We are also working on putting together larger marketing campaigns just for the city in general, but we will be seeking out specific developers that we either have worked with on other projects or, you know, just reaching out and letting them know that this property is available and that we're looking for proposals.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilmember Urban.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve as presented, please.
Okay, motion by councilmember Urban. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by trustee, councilmember Becker, sorry. Okay, let's go vote electronically. Thank you, Melissa. Okay, the item passes. There are no names to announce. Next item on the agenda is consideration action to approve the local 362 parking enforcement contract as requested by the Human Resources Department and Facilities Department. Deputy City Manager Tyus.
Thank you, Mayor, once again. This agreement, if approved, would ratify a contract between the city and local 362 Labor's International, representing our parking enforcement employees. It's one of our smaller teams. It's a team of four people. The agreement, again, was signed tentatively on May 10th, subject to your approval. It would be for a three-year term with 3% increases for each of the three years. There are some other adjustments that are being suggested here to include an adjustment for crew leaders in terms of their pay, increasing in the clothing allowance, and to clarify some of the overtime language, and also gives us the ability to adjust parking enforcement schedules. One of the things that we've seen over the last couple of years is a desire to do that in certain instances. And so those are the details of the agreement. I want to offer, if approved, a huge congrats to the bargaining unit, but also to Angie Brown and the HR Department and Nicole Albertson, who have worked hard to bring this to this point. We'll take any questions.
Okay. Questions or a motion?
I'll move. Approval.
Okay, move by councilmember Ward and second by councilmember Bullen. Okay, so we can go ahead and vote electronically. Okay, the item passes. There are no names to announce. And next item on the agenda is the Finance Director's Report, and I'm going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Tyus.
Thank you. This will be the Finance Department's regular Finance Director's Report. Obviously, this is not our finance director. This is Chris Tomlin, who is our budget manager, who is stepping in for Scott Rathman for the night. You guys gave him a big hand last couple of meetings. So we decided to bench for a minute. No, I'm kidding. Chris, take it away, please.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Tyus, Mayor and City Council. The report is for through April 30th, 2022. And as many of you know, our fiscal year is May 1 through April 30. This report is the first of three reports we'll have over the next three months on April. We have invoices that come in in May and June that are backdated because they're for services or goods received through April. Also, we have revenues that come in in May or June that are backdated as well for home rule, state sales tax, income tax, local tax that are also backdated as well. Next slide, please. So as you see in the month-to-date column, one of the items I just referenced here were some of the months for revenues collected, home rules and state sales tax are through 10 months. And our local taxes, food and beverage, hotel motel, and the utility taxes are collected through 11 months on this report. One of the ones to point out that we have highlighted, Scott highlights a number of these and talks in detail a little bit about these each month, is our income tax. A number of businesses in the state of Illinois have performed well during the course of our fiscal year. So the income tax received has performed well. I will let you know that since this report's been generated, we've actually received the amount that we're going to receive in May for April, and that has performed very well, not reflected on this total report, but it exceeded budget again as well. Next slide, please. General fund revenues, again, through April 30th. Again, we talk about these, the taxes, we still have, we're performing well. We've updated our projected year-end column, as you see, to 108,000. That's slightly higher than last month based on more visibility on home rule, state sales, income, and some of our local taxes. We've performed well in our permits. For an example, permits in March and April for new house construction, I think we had 28 new permit applications in March, 21 in April, and I believe we have 22 pending already in the month of May, which is the new fiscal year. But again, we're seeing the growth in the city and the request for new housing within the city. And then we have our transfers in, where we have transfers in for other departments that support the general fund. Next slide, please. Expenditures, salaries. So you see our total for the year is just about $41 million in the year-to-date actual. We'll have one more month, or excuse me, one more payroll of salary and benefits that will actually hit this report when we present next month. The check that we received in May, on May 6th, our payroll lags a week. So that was actually through April 30th. So that payroll will do what's called an accrual, where we'll move those expenditures back into the current fiscal year. Contractuals, pretty much on trend for the year at 13.7 with the projected versus the 13.8 overall. The other big one to talk about here would be the increase in a couple of the other intergovernmental expenses, and then again, in the transfers out. And that's due to a better performance than expected in the home rule state sales tax. 10% of that is for McLean County for mental health that's transferred out each month. And then the asphalt and concrete. In addition to the full amount of the local motor fuel tax that we move over to the asphalt and concrete fund each month, 10% of the home rule sales tax is also allocated by council to go toward asphalt and concrete. Next slide, please. Now to talk a little bit about some other funds other than the general fund, so water, sewer, storm, solid waste, and golf and arena. One of the things to highlight under solid waste, and for actually a number of these departments, is early in the fiscal year, we'll do a lot of our purchase orders in May for, for example, for our, what we call tipping fees or for our landfill costs for the year, and then we'll pay on that purchase order throughout the year. The revenue comes in on the utility bill over the course of the 12 months, but the purchase order will be out there in May. So as we report each month, it will have a negative outlook as we work out through the year. But then as we go through the rest of the fiscal year, that negative number will decrease and often turn to a positive because we'll have revenues exceeding expenditures by the end of the fiscal year. We also look at our commitments, our POs every fiscal year within the Finance Department, and we try hard to, if it's something that's from a prior year that's done, we'll close out those POs. So as those POs are liquidated, if there's any balance on those purchase orders, that will actually be returned to the fund balance within that individual fund that the PO was for. The other thing was to talk about is golf. It's at 96% on the revenue trend, charges for services through the month of April. So it actually outperformed a little bit last year. We did have some, unfortunately, March and April were not good weather months this year for us, and golf kind of, obviously, people start playing again in March and April. So again, we had hoped that would exceed 100% on charges for services for the year, but it didn't. Still an overall good year. But again, March and April, unfortunately, the weather, especially on the weekends, was not favorable to golf during the course of the year. Next slide, please. Again, these reports can be found on the website. The path is here, and with that, I will open it up to any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Okay, it looks like you're crystal clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is the City Manager's Discussion by the Deputy City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Phil. If you'll put the slides up, please. A couple of slides and then one more comment that I'll have. The outdoor farmer's market, the farmer's market has returned outdoors, obviously, every Saturday from May through October, 7:30 a.m. to 12 noon. My understanding is that that has gone well to date, and we're looking forward to many more. Next slide, please. Cogs and Corsets, a longstanding community event, will return June 3rd and 4th through various downtown locations. It's part of the June 1st Friday, and obviously, they'll have several vendors and workshops and other events as part of corgs and corsets. Corgs and cogs and corsets. Thank you very much. Hey, I'm still new. Thank you very much. And finally, the other comment that I will have is that we talked to you, and you approved a resolution recently where we talked about the need to redraw our boundaries based on new census, excuse me, new census data. There's a public component to that, where original plans were to have the public submit recommendations by June 1st, where we're going to push that to later in the month of June. There's a lot of data. We've been working through some of that information, and we want to make sure that we didn't just dump data on the website and then just leave it to folks to come up with their own ideas. And so we're going to be posting that information soon. We'll accept those maps if the public has a desire to provide them probably mid to late June, and so more to come there. As you know, there's only so many possibilities that you could have with those maps when you start to look at precinct residency requirements and ward populations and racial and other demographic impacts as well. And so we'll create a number of maps for you to review, and obviously, it will be for you to decide which of those maps, if any, you would like to consider and approve. And so more to come there. Just wanted to let you know that we're going to push the deadline to later in June to give them folks more time to, if they're interested in providing maps to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And under Mayor's comments, I know we're not going to meet for a while. So I just wanted to mention that we have a, the Bloomington Public Library ribbon-cutting, or not ribbon-cutting, sorry, groundbreaking, will be June 2nd. So just wanted to mention that exciting time. And that is all I have. So next item would be councilmember comments or discussion. Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, last Monday, I had the pleasure of attending the Carl Mobile Health Unit tour at Woodhill Towers here in Bloomington. And one of the professionals there, Jonathan, provided me with a tour. This facility was really impressive. They have two exam rooms. They can do EKGs. It just was really cool to see this potential for this resource in our community. And it was really clear to me, you know, that this is an effort that's taking healthcare beyond the hospital walls and really bringing it into the community. It was just a really, it was really a great thing to see. So thank you.
Thank you. Others? Councilmember Bullen.
Yeah, this month, the month of May, is Mental Health Awareness Month. And I went to an open house at the McLean County Community Health Center this past week. That particular building, I believe, was donated. It sits under the radio tower on Center Street. So if you have a chance to go over there, they provide a lot of services for those that are suffering with mental illness. And the new director is just, she's a gem. So I think that we have a real asset now in this community.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig.
Follow-up on Tom Crumpler's comments. The Mobile Health Unit was really impressive. Donna Bullen and I enjoyed touring the unit as well. And I think it's a lot of potential for our community to expand that program. Related to mental health awareness, I'm just putting out there publicly that I would appreciate an update from the McLean County Mental Health Coordinating Council in terms of the recent plan that I believe the board just approved and just to hear about how the funds that we're dedicating towards that are being used would be a good update in the future. And finally, the voting season has now begun. Get out the vote.
Awesome. Sure.
I'm not sure if the updated McLean County Health Mental Health Plan is on the website. It may be. And we are scheduled for a new meeting, another meeting in a week. And we are scheduled for a new meeting, another meeting in a week. So I will get an update to you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other, is there a motion to adjourn? Okay, motion by Councilmember Montney. Second. Say second, second by Councilmember Becker. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, we're adjourned.